No, I didn't. Um, I what they said. I got home, it was like four o'clock.
Were you hungry?
No. It was tight.
It was good.
Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting for the night of April eleventh, two thousand sixteen. The Board of Selectmen have just come out of a paperwork review as well as a discussion with Town Council. We'll now go into our regular agenda at six thirty. So if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is for consent items. We have under consent, the minutes of March twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, March fourteenth and March twenty eighth, non-public minutes, accounts payable manifest of April fifth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents, and of April twelfth, two thousand sixteen, of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and fifteen cents. Payroll manifest for April seventh, two thousand sixteen, of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents, and of April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, of forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Department of Revenue Administration Form MS one-two-three. Abatements, we have one approval and one denial. A, we have an intent to excavate for approval and two elderly exemptions. Are there any other items or any items on the consent agenda that the members of the board wish to remove?
Mr. Chairman, I had two items I would like to request be added.
Okay.
Uh, the first was actually in your packet. Um, it's for a disability tax deferral for MAP nineteen lot one thirty-six. This was a case that we had previously discussed in non-public session.
Mm-hmm.
And Police Chief just provided me this morning with a permit for a hawkers peddler's license. It's to Groundhog Landscaping. And the license would be for a period of one year, April eleventh, two thousand sixteen, to April tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Are there any members of the board who wish to not have those items added to the consent agenda? Hearing none then. We have those ten items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Selectman Lemire. Is there a second by, we have a second by Selectman Brunel. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. So you can make sure that those are available for signature if they are needed. Okay. Next item is a request for any additional items or any other business. Do any members of the board have any other business they wish to discuss and have added to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on. Public input will occur no later than seven PM. Now going to the business portion of our meeting. Annual policy review. We have three policies that are up for review. Cash receipt policies, fraud policies, and investment policies. First item is the cash receipt policy. That is in your onsite or online package. Is there any corrections or any discussions that any members of the board have concerning changes that should be put into the cash receipts policy? The last revision date on that policy is April twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen.
Chairman, I move that we reapprove or how do you?
We just approve as.
Approve as writ.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Selectman Lemire, seconded by Selectman Bork to approve the policy as it currently exists. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Next policy is the fraud policy. Are there any members who have changes that they wish to bring to the board's attention for the fraud policy, which is dated May twelfth, two thousand fourteen?
Mr. Chairman, I move to we.
Hang on a second. Did you have something?
Nope. I just wanted to add something. Um, under both policies, I reviewed the cash and the fraud policy. And one of the things that Finance Director myself realizes that we should probably have a statement in both of them that require the policy to be reviewed, or at least provided to the applicable employees every other year. And I could update both policies to reference that. One of them, like this one here, talks about having it reviewed every three years. And I believe the other policy was every other year. I thought it'd be consistent to make it every other year.
Okay.
In other words, so once the Selectmen would still review the policies on an annual basis, every other year, we would provide a copy of the policy to the employees.
Okay.
And they would sign off. Obviously, any new hires would receive one upon being hired.
Okay. Are there any members of the board in disagreement with that?
No.
I think it's just making more work, but that's fine.
I'm just.
Well, we still stay at the same review. I think what he's saying is it's reviewed by the applicable employees.
Just by the employees, the only thing it is.
It's just making more work for them.
It's, well, we have to do one policy every other year, and this other one's three, and it's thought that if we, as we review all these policies, we try to do it. If we can get them all in line so that we.
So you're putting them all consistent.
Yeah, we can just kind of do it every other year as one.
That's fine. I'll move, we approve as amended.
Okay. We have a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Selectman Bork. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Hang on a second. I keep screwing myself up here. Next op, next policy for review is the investment policy. Are there any um, items that the members of the board wish to bring to the attention of the board for amendments or changes to this policy? The policy date is May eleventh, two thousand fifteen. Do you have something, Troy?
I have something, yes.
Okay.
The policy makes reference to Appendix A, B, and C. Appendix A has been removed, so we'd like to see B replaced, be replaced with A, and C to be replaced with the letter B.
Where's this revision?
It's actually says at the bottom, it says it's already removed. A and B have been both removed.
Yeah, so throughout the document, there's still some reference to Appendix A. Yeah.
So he's just talking about.
Cleaning up the wording.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a housekeeping.
Housekeeping. So my intent was that, you know, I'd make these up, these changes, and then at your next meeting, you would sign.
Yes, that's the way we normally do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the investment policy as amended.
We'll move the investment policy as amended. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Selectman Bork. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Next item on the agenda then is Penachuck Utility Assessment. So what I wanted to do is report to the board a discussion that occurred at the DES meeting of last week, Thursday. At that meeting, there was two individuals from Penachuck Management. One was the CEO of the company, and unfortunately, I don't recollect his name.
Larry Goodhue.
Larry Goodhue, was it?
Yeah, according to this letter, anyway.
Okay. And the other person there was Mr. Don Ware. They approached me with their concerns about the appeal of the two thousand fifteen assessment. They were suggesting that they would like to have an informal discussion to occur so that they could bring this up and would prefer not to drag this out in front of attorneys and everything else. So my question to the board is, do we wish to have those discussions, or do we want to just let this go through its process as it currently sits now? If you can remember, I think it was three to five years ago, there was an agreement struck between the Board of Selectmen and the town of Litchfield, which changed their assessment. And, and that change in assessment brought it back for a period of time to what Penachuck's feeling it should be. And now that we have gone to Mr. Roburge, Mr. Roburge has come forward and calculated the assessment, which is originally what we had before. So what would we, what would the board like to do on this? Would you like to have those discussions or decline those discussions with Penachuck?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would hurt to open a line of communications to start, rather than just jump into a litigation, right? I wouldn't mind seeing what their position is.
Well, I think their position's going to be that we've, we've overestimated the assessed value.
I would say if we're going to have those discussions, we should have Mr. Gary Roburge in here as well.
Right, and have, have backup.
Have our.
Inform us of why he's got his numbers different from what they think they should be.
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
From the letter, it sounds like they're going by the DRA assessment, which is half of what we assess. Do I read that? Am I reading that correctly?
You're talking Penachuck?
Yeah, Penachuck is just DRA's assessment, okay.
Right. But you have to understand, the DRA assessment has some problems with it. So I don't believe for a moment that the DRA assessment is valid. DRA comes out with a number, not using the techniques that are used by assessors. So.
I, I wouldn't mind having them come in, as long as we had our people with us.
And, and just again, as a reminder for the board and those folks watching at home, the Board of Selectmen has already acted on their abatement request. We denied that a few weeks ago.
Right.
So, you know, the Penachuck official that contacted Chairman Byron, I think, was just looking to reach out before they initiate legal proceedings.
And, like I said, I don't think it hurts to.
Right.
Have communication. To our due diligence.
I agree.
First.
What do other people feel?
Like I said, I'm happy to meet with them as long as we can have our assessor in here at the same time.
Right.
I don't think it will hurt.
If we're going to have the discussion, we'll have the discussion so we can actually come to a resolution, not just have it.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Is this something that Gary Roburge would be willing to come in and discuss?
Reach out to him and see.
So why don't we do this, then? Why don't you go back with Don Ware? And let's see if they would be willing to come in and have a meeting with the board. It will, of course, be a public meeting. And that we would ask that Mr. Roburge be there so he could explain from his perspective why the assessment is correct, and we could hear what they have to say. Are you, is that okay, Troy?
Yep. I'll reach out, you know, to both parties. Both parties may or may not, you know, be comfortable having that discussion in public, so.
Well, I think it's, uh, this is a public matter. It's not like.
Exactly. I'm just, you know.
Okay. So let's see if we can get that arranged and we'll go, we'll go forward from there. And, and I think the important thing is to say that the board, from what I can tell unanimously believes that having those discussions is fine, and that we don't have an issue with that. And we'll see what we can arrange. Okay?
Okay. Anything else on that? Next item.
The second item that was brought up by the individuals from Penachuck at the DES hearing last Thursday was the, was an issue dealing with the expansion of water lines to the northern part of town. As everybody's aware, right now, the extreme northern part of Litchfield is not served by the Penachuck system. And that one of the solutions that is being asked of Penachuck by DES is to estimate the costs and estimate the timeline to get water up to the northern part of town. Part of that discussion has to deal with what is the usage of that water going to be? And Mr. Ware asked me the question, does the Board of Selectmen require that we put in hydrants on those lines to act for fire prevention purposes? Mr. Ware stated that if we were to put hydrants on the lines, and again, just to refresh your memory, it's approximately ten miles of piping that would have to be installed, along with an additional ten miles of side piping that would be required. Mr. Ware stated that that would increase the bill to the town of Litchfield somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars per year in fire hydrant charges. So I said to Mr. Ware that I would bring this back to the board, and we would get a feeling from the board as to which way we'd like to go. I can remind, I do remind you that these are for estimates. Whether that happens or not is a totally separate issue. And I think we need to keep in mind that the town has consistently, in its zoning ordinances, required the installation of hydrants for new developments. But this is a little bit of a different case. What's the thoughts of the board?
I don't, I don't think we should change our position. I think.
I agree with you a hundred percent. I agree, too. It'd be counterproductive if you're running water lines. People in the North End have been without fire protection. If they're going to have to pay for water.
Yeah.
Well, they're already paying for fire protection because it's in everyone's tax.
Well, it's in everyone's tax bill, so I mean, the least we could do for the North End.
The home insurance would change by being closely, better proximity to a fire hydrant.
I, I think it would be, i- if we require them in other areas of town, even though this is retrofitted, I think it would be counterproductive for us not to follow that same process. It is fire protection.
Can I ask a question on that? If they do charge Litchfield a bill, and this is a requirement due to the problem, shouldn't that bill go across the river?
Well, I think the sixty thousand dollars is the yearly cost that we pay. We already pay for hydrants now.
Right, no, I understand that.
It's, I think the sixty thousand dollars is the ongoing upkeep of those hydrants going forward.
But it'd be the additional hydrants on our end, so, but they're being put in because of this situation, so wouldn't that be something to discuss with?
Well, I think she raises a good point that, that, you know, they probably shouldn't pick and choose what they pay for.
Let's, let's take a step back.
Hang on a second, guys.
We don't have a resolution to how this is being paid for at all.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Right.
So we don't need to worry about that, but yes, I feel we should put hydrants in. We shouldn't put pipes in the ground unless there's hydrants.
Right.
As well. From that point, I think the people across the river, the river should pay a lot of money for the problem that they've incurred.
Sure.
I'm not sure that this would come under that, though, or not.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's exactly where.
Well, it's something we'd have to explore.
No, I was just saying, just as a topic to discuss.
Yeah, if our, if our ordinance or say that they're, that if you're putting in water lines, you're putting in hydrants, then that's part of the ordinance they have to do it, so they, they incur the build-out costs. The yearly upkeep, which, which we, I, I think the town, the town benefits from it, so it would come to us, but.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the total cost of this would be about six point eight cents per thousand on the tax. So, okay. Um, I, I want people to keep in mind that there's nothing that says they're running the lines to the northern part of town. Penachuck is trying to develop a cost estimate. It's the intention that the cost estimate will go to DES, and it's the intention of DES that this cost estimate will be given to the St. Gobain's. So just to let you know, the use of this data is for asking St. Gobain's by DES as far as making good on some of the, the issues that they have created or appear to have created, I should say. Okay?
So is our message to Penachuck, if this was to go forward, it would include hydrant, hydrant?
Well, I was going to ask if somebody wanted to make a motion on that, and if they do, then I'll, I will have that information given to Penachuck.
Motion so made.
Yeah, and I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Selectman Brunel, a second by Selectman Lemire, that we would ask for the installation of fire protection on those lines going north. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero. Okay.
Um. Before you move on, I just wanted to make a few comments. That if part of the remediation plan is to extend public water service to the homes in the northern section of our community, we'll all have to watch this and monitor it very closely. I think it's a very aggressive timeline to plan and install, I don't know how many miles of, of water line throughout all the neigh, the neighborhood and our public streets and rights away. Well, it could be, you know, we're, we're going to need to make sure we have fully engineered plans, have the ability to review those plans, understand how they plan on installing it and the different phases, and, you know, we don't want people, well, we're going to want to work as close as we can to get the service installed, but it's, this could happen in January and February, this kind of construction. So it could be occurring in that ti, that timeframe. It would be difficult.
So just to let you know, the timeline that I heard from Mr. Ware was that if they were going to have any chance of getting this done, I'll call it during construction season this year, they would have to be in the ground or starting in the ground sometime in May. Okay? And they would be working almost around the clock with three or four teams trying to get this piping put into the ground. So just to let you know, it's a very aggressive schedule. It's optimistic, I think. I also asked the question as to what in their estimates are they including to ensure that our roads are not dug up and left a mess? And he assured me that his estimate was that they would put the piping in in the roadway, is which, which is what the town has usually required. And it would be their intention that they would repave the whole road. And it's almost a full reclamation that they would be doing on the roads. So just to let you know, that's what they're including in the estimate. I did not get a sense as to what the total cost of that would be, but it's, he told me, they both told me, it's not insignificant. Mr. Lemire?
Is there any reason we couldn't negotiate with Manchester Water Works for the North End?
Yes, there is.
And that's why I'm asking.
Because what is going on is they are two different systems.
Right.
And they're two different systems that utilize different, um, I'll call them.
Treatment, water treatments.
You can't mix them, right?
And you can't mix them.
Um, and I understand, but I'm not saying connect them. I'm saying, because we have Manchester, if I'm not mistaken, in Pine Creek, it comes through.
Sandy Brook and that, that's what I was just.
It comes through from the Manchester side.
He leases back to Penachuck.
And, and I, I'm saying, why not ask them if they could extend their portion down to a certain point, not connecting? I'm wondering.
My understanding is DES has had those discussions with Manchester, and Manchester has opted not to, opted not to look into it. I also will tell you that water, I do know, goes all the way up to the golf course, Albuquerque, as far as I'm aware.
Oh, it comes downhill crest, though. It does not come up.
It comes downhill crest.
Right. They had to run the line for the country club, um, they had to run that line all the way downhill Crest Road. Because there was a delay at the time because.
I, I have no idea. Why would they even have Hill Crest Bigot?
Hill Crest is out here.
It's out here. What are you talking about?
You're talking about the North End.
I'm talking about the golf course, the nine-hole golf course.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm, okay, I'm taking it past the conway you're talking about.
No, no, I'm talking the golf course up, the nine-hole golf course up the North End.
I guess the other question would be, does Penachuck have the volume? I mean, the capacity to take on the additional homes?
Yes, they do.
I'm just thinking about all the water bans and everything else that goes on all the time.
No, they have sufficient capacity to, to do that, and that's, that was one of the questions I had, and they assured me that there was. I did have a meeting with Penachuck probably a year and a half to two years ago, and they had more than enough capacity to supply the town. The other thing that they were looking at doing is bringing a line underneath the river and over, which would also supplement that out of, um, out of the northern, uh, northern Nashua portion. So there's a new plant over there that has boatloads of capacity.
So here's a question I have. Would we, as a town, not bond the whole project?
We might.
Force a bond on the project for reclamation purposes?
We would have to, right?
We'd very well push.
Oh, yeah.
So that way there, if these roads aren't brought back up to the standards we have, we have a position of recourse.
Right. And, and that's something I want to talk about in a moment, but that's a whole separate issue.
Yeah, the other question I had was, I don't recall the roads, the, the road projects this year, if any, the roads up north are involved. I don't think they are, right?
No.
Still want to see us pave and then have it ripped up, you know?
Well, I, I, I think what we have to do as a board is make sure that if Jack's got road projects, he's going to be doing this year or next year, that if they potentially are involved in this, that we don't just do some work and then find out we got to rip it all up and redo it again. It just doesn't make any sense.
I don't remember any, any roads on the North End.
All this year is down there.
I think, I think Acorn is one road that would need some piping in it, but I think that was done by Jack a couple, it's Acorn or Mike, I forget which one.
That was about a couple of years ago.
Mike was done a couple of years ago.
So, um, I, I guess I'll turn it over to Troy if you want to go through this. Um, last week, what day was it? Thursday? We had a meeting with Kelly, Senator Ayotte. You want to update the board on that meeting in general terms?
Oh, good, yeah. Um, so it was Friday.
It's a Friday.
Friday morning, yeah. Um, following the, the public information meeting that we had with, uh, here in our community. Uh, Senator Ayotte had called the meeting and was there to listen from the towns of Bedford, Merrimack. Uh, we had, um, Litchfield obviously represented. Uh, we had the Merrimack Valley Water District. And we had a roundtable discussion. The issues that we discussed was primarily, we heard a lot of frustration with the fact that the EPA has not made a determination as to what the safe levels of PFOA should be in drinking water. And she was going to, uh, she understood that this was very important because if you're going to treat water and provide it to residents, if you don't have any standard to follow, you don't know how to filter that water and treat it to get it delivered to the homeowners. And of course, if you're going to do, you purchase your own type of treatment for, treatment for your house, again, vendors can't sell you something, that equipment, if they don't know what they're trying to meet. So she was going to work hard on that. And also reach out to St. Gobain, um, make sure that they're aware that Litchfield and Merrimack, Bedford are their own communities, their own legal townships. I guess there was some confusion. St. Gobain thought Merrimack was, was the, was the, you know, legal corporation, and we were all just sort of villages underneath the, the town of Merrimack. So she was going to reach out and clarify that. We, as a group, had decided that it'd be in the best interest of our communities that we continue to meet, um, pretty much on like every other week basis, so that we can keep information flowing, invite EPA officials, New Hampshire DE. invite EPA officials, New Hampshire DES officials, and begin, um, you know, talking, uh, or discussing, you know, what hour, um, what legal actions, uh, we, we could or could not take. I also failed to mention the town of Litchfield, uh, the town of Lunandary was in attendance at that meeting.
So, um, I suggested that we try and get together, I was gonna send out an email to everybody who attended that. I had originally at the meeting spoke to, um, Selectman Brunel, asked Selectman Brunel if he could head up that, and if the board's in agreement with that, I'd, um, I suggest that Selectman Brunel work with that regional group to try and, um, handle that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And John, you're still good with that?
Thank you. Just needed to know who I gotta reach out to.
Well, what I'm gonna do is I'll-
Email us.
Email, and you'll get, you'll, you'll, it should, I hopefully will go home tonight and, uh, send that out. And, um, I think the other thing, there were a couple of things that the, the senator has agreed that we would do, that, that she would do. One, try and open up EPA testing laboratories to try and see if we can expedite some of these samples coming through. Number two, try and ha- uh, force EPA to come out with a standard for PFOA, uh, long-term exposure in, uh, things such as drinking water. Number three, uh, take a look at C six. Now, PFOA is, is a eight-carbon chain molecule. Saint Gobain has changed to a six-carbon molecule, and that was discussed at the EPA meeting, but nobody has any idea, at least I didn't get an idea or clear idea as to whether that molecule is any better or just as difficult, just as bad as the C, as a eight-chain carbon molecule. So, um, she was gonna try and get some clarity on that out of EPA, and, um,
I thought they addressed, they addressed it, but I don't recall what they said. Something about not, not adhering to anything and just, uh-
And the other thing that she was gonna try and do, and I said to, um, EP, uh, DES, um, the Deputy Commissioner of DES has agreed to meet with that group if we put, when we put it together, to try and keep us, I'll call it, up to date on what they're doing. And I also believe that at this point in time, we need to find out from the Attorney General's office as to what they're doing as well, to make sure that, um, if there is a class action suit that is brought on behalf of the residents of New Hampshire, because that's who would bring it, um, by the Attorney General's office, that we're aware of that and understand what, what we, uh, our rights and our, uh, participation in that whole thing, so. It was a de- it was a decent meeting, I thought it went pretty well, and, um, I think hopefully we can get some movement on this through, uh, the senator's participation and through forming this group. Questions? No?
Not really.
Anybody? No? Okay. Anything else I missed on that?
No, but I do just wanna, it's, right now would be a good time just to make sure the board's aware that, uh, I have received an email correspondence from, um, an employee, well, it was a public relations officer from, uh, Saint Gobain, so they have reached out via email. I have contact information, um, so when and if we need to make contact with them, I do have a contact.
Okay. At this point in time, if there's anything else on this Saint Gobain's issue? No. At this point in time then, um, as we have no members of the public in our audience, uh, I will close, um, public input, it is now, uh, seven oh three, and we will continue with the agenda. So, tax cap discussion. Um, I'd received a question from Selectman Brunel about the tax cap. Uh, as everybody's aware, there was an issue with the Hudson Litchfield News failing to put our prior notice of a public hearing into their paper. Um, that request for public hearing was submitted to them on time, and they just, uh, did not, um, put it into the paper when it should have been. Therefore, there is some question that the passage of the tax cap is, is, uh, valid or not. And, um, I would like to, um, hear from the board as to whether we wanna have a, uh, additional special meeting to ratify the tax cap, or if the board would be, um, more in line with allowing this to go until next budget, uh, next ballot, and putting it onto that ballot, and, uh, doing those two meetings that we're supposed to have done and everything else at that point in time.
Just to be clear, a special meeting would be another election.
Correct.
Which would only be for this issue.
Correct.
It would be, in my best opinion, that we as a board recommend that the Budget Committee as well as us follow the tax cap as approved by the townspeople at the last election, and go through next year's election process to ratify it and get it to pass appropriately.
Okay, so, I, I would agree with that, the only exception to that I would state is that the tax cap really is on the, the Budget Committee in order to-
And that was, that was my question, 'cause I listened to the Budget Committee meeting, heard the comments, and I, I was confused because with my understanding that the, the boards, the boards' responsi- this board's responsibility is to present a budget to operate the town, whatever the number is. We always, we do try very well to keep that impact low. It's the Budget Committee's up, the requirement to meet the tax cap requirement.
That is, that is correct.
And we could still propose, uh, warrants and so on to cover the differences, and the only thing I understand is that they could, they just gonna vote against it because it doesn't meet the tax cap criteria. But we can still discuss the needs and publicize it and talk to the public and why we're doing it.
And you could bring those forward to deliberative.
Right.
And if you bring it forward a deliberative and it passes a deliberative, that would've been, that would be an override of the tax cap, and therefore it would go onto the ballot that would be voted in that subsequent march.
Now, I'm confused in the special meetings, I thought the special meeting was a deliberative-style meeting, not an actual full election.
It's a meeting, as I understand it, that combines both a deliberative as well as a, a vote at that meeting.
And, and it's a hand raise.
Sure.
And town council, it, it, the only purpose is for the tax cap, you can do it in one.
'Cause I thought that, 'cause, I think, I mean, Steve, I may have been reading your question wrong, but to cur- to do a full election with ballots, I don't know, that's a huge expense that we would pick up.
Exactly, right, right.
A deliberative style-
I, I think it's more deliberative style.
Yeah, if that was the case, it's, it's really posting it, getting up people to vote.
And, and I agree with Mr. Perry, I think that we should wait till next town meeting, uh, vote to ratify it at that point. And not incur an expense for a special meeting because of, of the implications of what could and-
And, and I think that's the best way, I mean, the voters have clearly spoken as to what their intent and what their wants are, and I think it's incumbent upon the Budget Committee to follow that.
So do we reach out to the Budget Committee with that, with that, that ask and say, we set the rate at this, and we ask you to achieve to that, and?
I think that we basically should, um, send some type of indication to the Budget Committee explaining what the decision of the board is, that we're not gonna go forward with a, I'll call it, a ratification meeting, or whatever you wanna call it, and because the citizens have so loudly spoken in favor of that, that we will-
Kinda follow the process.
Follow the process.
So our intent is to present a budget that makes sense, we'll do warrants, we'll ask the voters for approval, we'll override the deliberative, and then they go on the ballot.
If that's what's needed, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody agree?
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did you wanna go back to, uh, the impact fees?
Yes, I'm sorry, my apologies, I inadvertently skipped impact fees.
He likes talking about the tax caps, though.
No, I just, I just zoned out and, and, and missed the impact fees, Nessunkeg and Nakoma. Now, Troy, you wanna lead us through this one?
Sure. So Jack approached me, uh, last week and told me that he would, we really need to address, uh, a couple of sections of Nessunkeg Road and a small section of Nakoma Road. And this is due to, uh, just the age, wear and tear on that road, but also, uh, you know that there was a housing development, Hamill Drive, that's been under construction for the, you know, at least the last year and a half. Um, and so that has added to some of the deterioration as well. So, he was gonna try to, to see if it's possible to do it within his approved operating budget. Um, however, uh, with being given the, um, default budget and having some other budget issues, uh, that we, who are aware of, um, I questioned why we would not use the impact fees. So, looking, reviewing the ordinances and, um, uh, the zoning ordinances regarding the impact fee, I reached out to our contracted planner and asked her how we can use the impact fees, you know, with, what restrictions are there for roadway maintenance, um, because it's not straightforward from what I could find, uh, like, like, you know, utilizing the impact fees for the replacement of a building or a certain facility. Um, Jen had told me the process that the planning board went through, the methodology, uh, that they used and adopted, um, and she informed me that, uh, the planning board had utilized planning services from, uh, BCM Planning, which is, uh, Bruce Mayberry, um, out of the state of Maine. So I reached out to Bruce and asked him, um, told him what we were proposing to do, wanted to check to the, see if he felt this was an appropriate use of the funds, and, um, based on his, um, the information that Jen from NRPC provided him, um, he absolutely agreed. So, I know there's been some questions, I think, uh, regarding the use of impact fees for roadway improvements, and a lot of people have, uh, told me that it can only be used for new construction, however, um, based on my research, that's not the case. The planning board, um, adopted, um, a plan that I have here, that, this one here talks about the public schools and town roads, and in here, there were a couple of different tables, uh, that they had for methodology. And the planning board decided to go with, um, as I understand, Table Three, which listed a, um, list of all the major roads in our town. And there's been a plan that's put together to try to maintain those. So, it's, i- i- the use of impact fees is, um, the way we have adopted methodology in this town is to benefit those roads that are, um, used by, you know, majority of the population in our community. Not some side street that, you know, is a dead-end cul-de-sac. And these two roads were listed specifically in that table. So, the information I gave you is, um, one, the balance of our road impact fee fund, as of today, is a hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. We're looking at doing three hundred and seventy-five feet, um, on Nakoma, and about another, just under fifteen hundred feet on, um, Nessunkeg, which we would take off from Nakoma up to about seventeen Nessunkeg. When I went down and visited the, the, uh, the two roads today, I noticed that there's another small section, um, from Albuquerque, um, along Nessunkeg, um, it's about a thousand feet. That section is in just as poor condition as the two sections we're discussing this evening about repairing. I asked Jack why, you know, we wouldn't, uh, consider doing tho- that section as well while the equipment is there, and, and he went down and visited, he said, yeah, it absolutely makes sense. And he did, uh, a quick estimate of what he thought the cost would be. We're looking at doing a one-inch, uh, overlay, uh, and he, he estimated the cost of additional ten thousand dollars. So, overall, we'd, we would, and again, this is his, you know, in-house sort of estimate. Um, so that would, I'd be requesting that we, uh, be able to use twenty-nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars from the road impact fee.
Questions from the board?
Yes. If we have excess of a hundred thousand dollars in road impact fees that we can use to redo roads, why don't we come up with more roads that need to be done?
There's only certain roads that you can use for.
Well, there's gotta be some on the list, he said there's a list.
There's a list, and, um, I, I agree with you, because I actually, uh, had that conversation with, uh, Jack today, saying, you know, right now, probably is, uh, asphalt is at a record low. Um, we're not receiving any interest on this money sitting there in the bank, so not earning any interest, and we know that asphalt is, uh, competitively priced right now, and it's probably just gonna continue to increase. And we have the money in the bank. So I do think that, you know, I, I'm glad you brought that up, I do think that we should go back and, and, and I should meet with Jack, and we should take a look at our list and, and see if there are other, some other roads that we should try to address this year.
I mean, I feel pretty firmly in the fact that I would hate to see this brought down below, say, forty thousand or thirty thousand, 'cause you wanna make sure you leave some in there, in case something happens. But if we can get more done, and we have it, why don't we?
How, what's a class, what's a class-five road?
It's, uh, a road that's between a class-four and class-six.
It's a standard local public road.
Okay. So why are these roads on a list, though? I don't understand.
It was, um-
Class-five road, then, right?
Well, we have, this certain list was identified as major roads in our town. The class-five mean that they're publicly maintained with taxed dollar money.
Every road-
Well, there's class-six roads, and those are private.
No, not, not, not with the town's money, I mean, for example, Hillcrest.
No, I, I, I tell, I, I, the roads that we own, the one I maintain.
So there's-
'Cause I'm, I'm with Steve, if we have the ability to use the impact fees, then we should get those projects done this year, because based on Jack's schedule, he'll be done by June. He's willing to take on the additional projects, let's do it.
So, here's my sug- I mean, unless there's other questions from board, but my suggestion is we consider the request from the road agent on using the, call it, twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, not to exceed that number, and then have Troy and the road agent put together, I'll call it a hit list of what are-
Of the roads that are identified in that capital plan, whatever it was.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it.
That the, um, we approve the use of impact fees for the paving of Nessunkeg from Albuquerque to number fifteen Nakoma.
Roundup.
And to, uh, now you say this is all estimates, so would it be safe to say a figure? Not to exceed, or?
The estimate was, uh, twenty-nine thousand two fifty.
How about thirty thousand dollars?
Be fine.
Okay. And that we explore, um, other roads that we can be using with this, the impact fee.
So, without a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second, Mr. Brunel, you second it? Discussion of the motion in the second. Hearing none, all those in favor with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero, zero, and, and Troy, if you and Jack can come up with, right now you've used, call it, thirty thousand dollars, so you've got about another seventy thousand, uh, thirty thousand if you use Mr. Perry's number of forty to thirty thousand, somewhere in that range, as a reserve.
I just feel like we should leave something in reserve in case-
I think it's a good idea, I'm just think-
Something pops up, so.
The other thing I just wanna make sure is when, and I know the, I believe the office knows this, is that you always withdraw impact fees, oldest towards newest.
Karen knows that. I hear her grumbling about it every week.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, let's move on, we've done the tax cap, uh, two thousand sixteen budget adjustments, Troy?
Okay. So at the last meeting we had, um, I had not had the, uh, chance to consult, uh, the fire chief with some of the, the items we had addressed in, um, possible increases and decreases in the two thousand sixteen budget. And I actually, you know, sent an email around to department heads, just making them aware of this list, and one of the things that was brought to my attention that we overlooked was the lease payment on the highway pickup truck, which is nine thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars, and that was not calculated in the, uh, default budget when we, when we prepared that and, uh, approved it back in December. Should have, in my opinion, it should have been part of the default budget, obviously it was a contract that we signed for a three-year lease payment. Um, at this point, I've not identified where we're gonna get the money from to cover the, that- At this point, I've not identified where we're gonna get the money from to cover that, that overrun. However, I've had discussions with Jack, and I've had discussions with Dave Mellon, and between those two departments, there's a very good likelihood that we'll be able to cover that amount and maybe more than that amount. So one of the things we're looking at in the solid waste department is the contract that we have with Waste Management expires, I believe, at the, the end of this, the end of this year. And Waste Management has approached Dave and said, you know, be willing to sit down and do an extension. They can give you a substantial discount, the per-tunch cost. We could be looking at somewhere, rough numbers, ten, twelve thousand dollar savings. And 'cause we've had Waste Management for many years.
It probably has a lot to do with fuel, right?
I think, I think so, probably. But also, I don't think, you know, they, we're, we're one of the, I, I understand we've had Waste Management for many years, and they do not wanna lose us as a customer.
When we, when we converted over, they were the, the best contractor we could find at the time. And they turned out to be really good. They worked with us a lot, so.
I believe you're gonna find they're gonna wanna extend the length of their contract agreement in order to give a discount.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
We went through this.
We've been extending it.
That's what they're looking, and you've...
Ever, ever since we started with them, and there's been no, there hasn't been any cause to not extend it, but obviously...
And so that's something I'll be bringing to the board, and like I said, rough numbers right now, anywhere from ten, twelve thousand dollars in savings. This year, I've asked Dave to go back and talk to them about doing a retroactive adjustment to January first, two thousand sixteen.
Cool.
Okay, any questions on that? Troy, when are we gonna have the final populated budget?
So you'll have that. Hopefully, we'll have it next week, and what I've, Karen has reached out to the software company. It's gonna look and feel a little different when we do this. We have the ability to create a couple of different columns so that we can maintain the default budget, and then we'll have another column that will have an adjustment. And you'll be able to see those adjustments made, either an increase or a decrease, which will result in, you know, the adjusted bottom line, which will be, like I said, something new. We haven't had that, haven't seen that before.
The report that came out last week had the budgets already plugged in there.
Had the budgets plugged in, but what we don't have are these adjustments added in the column. So you could...
The increases. Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you could see that, for example, the town administrator's budget default was five thousand dollars for a paper, and we do an adjustment of, reduction of three grand, and now your new adjusted budget is two thousand. So that way, we can track it, and it's very clear to the department head, you don't have five thousand, you have two thousand.
Any questions? Is there anything else on that?
No.
Okay, so that brings the end to the business agenda. Let's go on to the administrator report.
Oh, there it goes, alright. Just wanted to make you aware, the, as you know, the Conservation Commission, about a year ago, signed a contract with Eames Forestry out of Allentown, New Hampshire, to do some timber harvesting. This year, we saw just a few weeks ago, they were out on Page Road. They've completed that, and we're starting to see the revenue come in. It's my intention that we'll be recording that revenue as, to the general fund. There was a contract that was signed, and the revenue, contrary to some belief, does not go to the Conservation Commission, and will be recorded in the, just under the general fund revenues.
Great. That's what it's always been done in the past.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone was aware. We've notified that the auditors will be in here on May third. Karen and, Carrie's already started working on, you know, gathering information. Department heads are preparing information so we can get it out to the auditors sooner than later, and hopefully that will allow everything to go smoothly when they arrive here on May third. I was contacted by New Hampshire DES. They informed me that they have communicated with Saint Gobain that as Saint Gobain prepares their environmental assessment, that our recreation facilities on Corning Road and Jeff Lane be included for soil sampling. So I wanna make you sure, you know, you're aware. I'm sure at some point in time, when Saint Gobain hires whatever environmental firm to conduct this testing, I expect that I'll be contacted. We'll have to give them permission to, you know, enter the property and collect the soil samples. I'm not sure if that's something that you want me to bring up later, if you just wanna authorize me to be able to execute whatever documents they need to enter our property and do that testing.
I, I think, I think it's fine to execute those documents. I mean, does anybody have a concern with that?
None.
No, if you could just let us know when they're coming, okay?
Okay. And the Litchfield Community Television Structure, I know this is one of the action items we've discussed, and it's something that's, is, I've been approached by, you know, the, I'll call him the manager, that we really need to get moving on, getting this structure in place, and whether or not we're going to have the committee involved or exist still, and as we transition to more of a department operation. So I'm just...
So I, I just wanna go over that, because it was my recollection that what we had discussed was that Mr. Penthony would come back with a structure for, I would call it a cable organization. He originally brought forward us, to us, some document that we had council take a look at, and council felt that there were some concerns and issues with it. That went back to Mr. Penthony, and he should be coming back with something to, to change that. Is that correct, or am I...
Yeah, the, the whole document that we had, basically, legal counsel was like, you, if you're go, if the intent is to abolish the advisory committee and move to more of a, a formalized department or a manager, then really there is no reason why we would have that document that existed for the, the committee. So it would be like starting off from scratch, trying to actually, you know...
Yeah, I thought, I mean...
It's not...
The thought was it could use some of the content in there and create sort of this department policy. How did, how does that department run in the hierarchy that's...
There's, you know, there's, there's issues about hours of operation, compensation, and, you know, procedures, policies, so I'm just bringing attention. I wanted to make you all aware that's something we've gotta really work on here.
My, my concern with this is, this is an issue that I feel we could keep beating around the bush on this forever and ever and ever. I, what I would like to see is, you know, the town administrator, in concert with Mr. Penthony, drafts something out that the board can review.
And that's what I thought we had ta, I thought we'd already tasked Troy. I'm, I'm sorry, but I thought we'd tasked you and, and Dick, and I thought Dick was gonna go off and start working on that and work with you to kind of come up with some agreement. If there's a disconnect, there's a disconnect, but...
Yeah, I did not know, I did not expect that Troy was involved in it, so that's my fault then for not understanding that. My recollection was that Mr. Penthony was gonna go away with that. And if we wanna bring Troy in, I just wanted to make sure the board's in agreement that we're gonna have Troy work on that, that's all.
My, my only point about Troy was, sort of like, the contact go to help with some terminology and what we're expecting, but I, I expected Dick to do most of the work.
Yeah.
Maybe he doesn't, but I'm not sure.
No, I just, it's, you know, I've been approached by Dick, and he's, you know, he's got a lot of questions and stuff, so I wanted to make sure the board knew. So we, we've gotta make this a priority, and, and I'll do what I can to try to get it moving.
Kevin, everybody, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Right. Steve?
I'm wondering why it isn't done already.
Okay.
And Troy, I can, I can help too. I mean, I can throw a hand in here and there.
Yep, good.
Anything else, Troy?
Yeah. I think that's, uh... Or was it him? Yeah, alright, well.
I was just reading notes.
It's tough of, we all work together as a team. So, no, that's it. That's all I have. Am I missing something?
No, I'm just trying to, this Tumblr's turning in my head that I was just lining up to, on something.
Oh, boy.
Is that it? You're all set, Troy? Okay, Selectmen reports. Any Selectmen have any reports?
I have none.
I attended the planning board meeting last week, where we continued to work on the master plan. We're just trying to update it, set firm goals. We encourage anybody that wants to have input to the master plan, please come down. Planning Board's meeting next Tuesday, and also, the Planning Board needs members. We are running low. We're down to almost a bare minimum at this point. A couple of people have resigned, and they need members, so if you're ready to step up and do something for your town, join the planning board.
Anything else?
Nope.
John, you got anything?
No, unfortunately, I missed the last Rec Commission meeting, but I'll be at the next one, other than the DES meetings.
Did they, did they select a contractor? Yeah, I, I haven't heard, okay.
Judging by the Hudson Litchfield...
Well, I saw a thumbs up and down.
I'm gonna say they did.
I wasn't at that meeting.
I don't read Hudson Litchfield News, so...
They did a good job. They put the water issue below the fold, and they put kickoff to softball season above it.
I'm not surprised. Okay, any other Selectmen reports or anything?
Uh, no, the only thing I'd like to say is, I was down at Town Dump yesterday. I just wanna say thanks to all the volunteers who helped pass out the water yesterday to all the residents who've been affected by the water issue going in town. And with the exception of that, budget meeting next Thursday, the twenty-first.
That's where you select the replacement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Brent, you're all set?
Awesome.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent calendar. There's no other business. And I think that should do it. Is there a motion?
Make a motion or adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Motion carries five zero zero. The next meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be the twenty-eighth. One thing quickly I just wanna cover, are there any items that the members of the board want on the next agenda?
The next, on the twenty-eighth, just so you're aware, that's, we will have CMA Engineering here, and they will be reviewing the wastewater study. You're gonna, you're gonna be away, right?
It's not the twenty-eighth. It's the twenty-fifth. I'm sorry, the twenty-fifth. My apologies.
Yep.
The twenty-eighth is something different.
I will not. And I know you're not, you're not gonna be here, right, Steve?
If you have questions that you wanna leave with us, we'll be...
Troy, he's gonna be in Disneyland.
You're gonna be goofy?
Keep them as an attraction.
Something like that.
Okay. With that said, the next meeting's the twenty-fifth here at the Town Hall, and we will see you then. Have a good...